I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. Roll call.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Here.
Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
Councilmember Woodard.
Attending remotely via teleconference.
And Mayor Protemwall and Councilmember Payne Donovan asked to be excused.
So moved.
Seconded.
So it's a move and seconded to excuse them? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Oh, we weren't... We didn't wait for Steve there. Alright. Next is the city manager's report. We have our deputy city manager here tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Glad to be with you. It's been a fun week and today was a highlight with our Public Works luncheon for National Public Works Month. And it was really great to have the crew together and the whole department and surrounded by other members of other departments. And the mayor came and read the proclamation, so thank you so much for being with us. We also had some other good news from police today that Detective Sergeant Sheets, who serves on SMART, our regional policing task force, has been moved into a managerial position in that organization and they're seeing great work out of her as well. So, that's exciting and this week, our Recreation and Parks Director is down in Vancouver, getting an award for the WRPA conference. So, a lot of exciting things happening there and that's all for now. Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Go ahead, Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep it brief and thank you Deputy City Manager. But, how amazing are all of our staff? That was a wonderful update and so particularly, I'm sorry to have missed the luncheon today. I had a conflict at work today, but appreciative for all of our Public Works employees and all of our employees who are out there doing great things and appreciate the updates. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, then we'll move on to a special presentation on the Snohomish County priorities with our county council member Jared Mead. Hi Jared.
Hello. Can you guys hear me?
Barely.
I'm quiet?
Yes.
Is that on my end? Can you hear me better now?
We can't hear you, but it sounds like you're far away.
Hmm.
But we can hear you.
I will move my computer closer to my face. Does that help?
Okay, yes it does.
Okay, technology. So, I also shared a slide or a presentation. I don't know if you all have that or if you have it in front of you or if I can pull mine up.
Whatever's easier for you, Councilmember, we can show it from here or you can show it from your computer.
Okay, I will screw it up if I try to do it, so why don't you just pull it?
Okay.
You're okay with that.
We will do that.
Thanks. Well, while we're doing that, I just want to say thank you to Mayor Matsumoto Wright and the City Council and to the staff for helping me set this up. I kind of want to start maybe doing this on a biannual basis, just to touch base and go around and talk about some of the things that we're all working on and how we can maybe work together on some of our shared priorities. So I appreciate you giving me some time. I'll try to be nice and quick and then we can do questions and have a conversation if that's what the council wants. So, basically what I'd like to do today is to share some refresher information about the county as a whole. Talk a little bit about our district, County Council District 4. And then maybe we can discuss some of the things you all are doing and how they maybe relate to some of the priorities that we have on the council and how we can leverage each other to make some projects work out. So we could go to that next slide. Thank you. So, from the high level, Snohomish County, as a refresher, we're a second, third largest county in the state. We've got about 850,000 people, but over the next 20 years, we're projected to grow by almost 300,000 people. And all that growth is coming kind of from the south. So we're feeling it in our district here and Mount Lake Terrace is feeling it. As you can see on that map right there, County Council District 4 is geographically the smallest district and they're based on equal population, so that just shows how dense we are in South Snohomish County. And you all are feeling that. You're right on the freeway, right on that corridor. This is where all the growth is happening and just to highlight over those 20 years, how many people are going to be moving here? What we're going to be needing to do as a community to fit those people and house those people. We can go to that next slide. So, from a high level, what the county council, what the county's budget looks like. This is our revenue versus expenses and that's not the way that you want it to look when you're looking at a graph of revenue versus expenses. The red there being our revenue total, which is the line that's under our expense total for the, at least for the next five years. On the bottom right, you can see the numbers, the actual numbers that are projected there. And what this means is the county is operating under a structural deficit. We've done well over the last 10 years to build up some fund balance. So we're well above the 14% target fund balance that we have set for ourselves as a goal. But over the next five years, we're going to be dipping below that, at least we're projected to be dipping below that. And that has to do with a lot of factors that we could get into. But one of the things that we're going to have to keep in mind that we're working on as a county and I'm sure you all are running into the same thing here in Mount Lake Terrace is our salary and benefits. We did a class and comp study and that has basically shown that all of our staff at various levels are below market rate and that's why we're having a lot of trouble hiring people and retaining good people. And so we're going to have to be addressing that and that's something that we know we're going to have to be expending some serious money to make right. And so that's kind of some, and then the COLAs, the cost of living adjustments that we're going to have to be dealing with as well in the outlook years is something that is really creating a complicated, complex problem for the county. And so, we're going to be needing to look at revenue options and also where we can save monies. So on that next slide, that's kind of where we highlight where our revenues are coming from. As a refresher and this is not anything new to a city council, most of our dollars in our general fund come from property taxes and sales taxes. We do not have a lot of tools in local government to raise revenues. Out of our $300 million annual general fund budget, almost 60, oh, two-thirds of it basically is made up between property taxes and sales taxes. So we could, and right there you can see I just listed some of the other revenues. I had to do some research to figure out what all these miscellaneous other revenues are that make up the rest of our budget there. So I listed them and we can go to that next slide. So of those 300-ish million dollars that we have, in 2024, we're projected about $330 million in our general fund. I just wanted to highlight, I know it's a really ugly chart to look at and I don't expect you to look into all of those, but I wanted to highlight at least some of the top expenditures from our general fund. And I do this whenever I do presentations about county budget because I think there's a misconception out there and I'm sure you guys feel this as well when you're presenting your city council budgets. What the difference between general fund and the total dollars expended by the city or by the county in our case. So here, our general fund, 63% of it is public safety and that's not just our sheriffs, that's our jail as well and our prosecuting attorney's office and our public defense and the court system. And then the second highest is our parks and rec at 5% there. But if we go to the next slide, you can see our total budget with, you know, almost $1.7 billion. And that's once you bring in the grants and the special revenues with the special taxes that we have and those grants. And you can see the model changes there and the proportions and all of a sudden Public Works is making up 20% of the budget there. Public safety is still up there, but because not a lot of monies come from special revenues or grants into public safety, that number evens out and then human services and park recreation. I know that's an ugly chart, so I just put it up there so you all could see it at another time if you wanted to zoom in on it. But I wanted to show what our budget looked like and because I think that'll be helpful in having our future conversations. So the main duties of the county council are very similar to the duties of a city council. Budget, number one, every year we would do a budget. This is going to be our first year doing a biannual budget. I'm not sure how Mount Lake Terrace does it, if you do a biannual or annual budget, but this is going to be the first year that the county council is going to try to tackle the biannual budget process. And that's going to be a really interesting process for our departments to go through. Second duty is passing legislation and then land use. And this year, we're all going through on local government, we're all going through the eight-year comprehensive plan. And that is a task. That is a heavy lift for local governments and I think something that the public doesn't necessarily pay much attention to until it affects them, but when it affects them, you hear about it. And I'm sure you all are hearing about a lot of the land use changes and decisions that you guys are making in your comp plan. Go to that next slide here. So this is the kind of the meat of the presentation. I wanted to at least highlight some of the things that we've been working on. Some of it's things I've been working on personally and some of it is general county things that we've been working on. But I wanted to give an idea at least of some of the things so that you have an idea and also we could find maybe areas that we can be compatible and work together. So, under the budget, we're, like I said, we're going to be doing and implementing our biannual budget for the first time this year, which is going to be a really interesting process and our departments are struggling, just as the county council is, to kind of imagine setting up instead of those annual plans, those two-year outlooks. And that's going to be, I think, a learning process and some growing pains we're going to be going through. I mentioned the class and comp study. That's going to be something that you all probably hear about in the next few months because it's such a big deal and I can't understate that enough, overstate that enough, that dealing with the staffing crisis, I think a lot of local governments are going through this, but counties, I think particularly, it's particularly difficult for counties given our, how stretched we are in our budgets typically. But that's something that we're going to have to be looking at over the next five years because we did the study and it tells us basically all of our staff are underfunded in all the different levels. And it would cost us, I think it was $26 million a year to right-size based on the study that came back. And that's not possible. If we raise our property taxes by 1%, we raise about a million dollars a year. And so that's just, it's not possible to implement it fully. So that's something that we're going to be looking at over the next five years and how to kind of slowly chip away at that. Our $10 million structural deficit, I highlighted that a little bit. Every year, essentially on average, we're spending $10 million and we're bringing in. And that, and I said in five years, that'll dip us below our 14% goal for our, for our, for our fund balance, which is a problem. And we know we have to fix it and luckily Executive Summers has recognized that we need to fix that and hopefully in this two-year budget, we're going to see that in a few weeks. The pro forma, at least, the executive's office, we're going to see some of that addressed in some spending cuts. But also, our bank capacity in Snohomish County, I'm sure some of you are aware of this, but Snohomish County of the three big counties, that being Pierce and King and us, Snohomish County is the only one that has a bank capacity number, let alone a bank capacity number that looks like this. Every year, counties and cities were able to take our 1% property tax increases. In Snohomish County, up until I joined council at least, had not taken a property tax increase for many, multiple years to the point where we, every year if you don't take it, you get to bank that 1%. We have 6.5% bank capacity at this point. And that is something that I think is leading to some of these budget issues that we have. And so that's something that we're going to be looking at. I know that the executive has been doing a lot of thinking about this type of revenue option and we'll see when he presents his pro forma and sends it up to the council where they've landed. But I think that's probably something that this year we're going to have to look at because of that structural deficit and trying to address our class and comp study and such. Under policy, the policy arena, we have been doing a lot under housing and childcare and public safety. For housing, we've been doing work with, we've got some policies related to ADUs because at the end of the day, we need some housing stock. I mentioned at the earlier part of the presentation, we have 300,000 people over the next 20 years that are going to be moving. You have to figure out how to house them. And at the same time, we're trying to balance protecting what makes Snohomish County desirable to live in, which is how beautiful and preserved our environment is. You can drive 20 minutes to the east and you can be hiking a mountain. You can drive 20 minutes to the west. You can be at the water and see the ocean. So we have a very unique, vibrant county here and we want to protect that. But at the same time, we need to find ways to house people. And so, looking at policies for infill development, ADUs are a great option. Densifying along the transit corridor and I don't have to tell you all how important that is and what a project that is. We're doing things to try to make housing a little bit more affordable, make it a little bit less expensive. I love some of these affordable housing stock. Multifamily tax is something we've been talking about at the state level and advocating for so that our developers can be more incentivized to build really dense housing within the urban growth areas. And then the county, you all probably had seen the stories about this, have purchased a couple of hotel motels in Everett and in Edmond as a way to, the most vulnerable folks in our communities housed and on to potentially permanent supportive housing after that. Under childcare, that's something that I've been really focused on as a personal project over the last three years. In Snohomish County, we're actually behind even the state and in Washington State, behind nationally when it comes to kindergarten readiness numbers. So, when we have, it's like 42% or something like that of our children entering kindergarten not meeting at least one of the standards, whether that be reading, writing, math arithmetic, that's a problem and it's something that I think all levels of government can help address. We don't, we don't just want to rely on the state to fix the problem. I think local governments have an opportunity to invest in programs, E-CAP programs. And one of the projects I'm working on is trying to partner with the Snow Isle Tech and create a track for high school juniors and seniors to get basically their licenses before they graduate high school. The licenses that you need to work in childcare so that we can help with the workforce. I've been working on policy related to permitting childcare facilities being able to be permitted and also zoned in certain areas where maybe they have not been zoned before. There's a couple of those policies moving through the county right now or moving through the council right now, sorry. And collaboration with our local providers, asking them, whether it's an E-CAP provider or a private in-home childcare, what they need from the county, how the county can help. Public safety has been a really interesting one to deal with over the last three years because of some of the things that have happened on the state level that have put extra burdens or at least different burdens on local governments. And I'm sure that you all have dealt with some of that as well with the Blake decision in the wake of Joy Floyd and all the conversations around changing the way that we police and not asking our officers to do more than we had originally expected them to do and getting them more resources so that they don't have to be mental health providers and therapists and everything all at once. And also with the increased issue of housing and homelessness and substance abuse that we're seeing, some of it in relation to the heightened accessibility of fentanyl and some of it, the rising cost of housing, making it less and less affordable to be able to find a place to live. But we are seeing an increase in those issues and so finding ways to help those individuals who need it the most. And part of that was the purchase of the hotels by the county. But there's also policies that we can do within our human services department and our contracting, which is something we're working on in order to better access the people that need help the most. And then under land use, I won't sit on this one too long because we're in the middle of the comp plan conversation right now and I'm sure you all are as well and it's, I personally enjoy it. I'm nerdy in that way and that's why I ran for office was environment and housing policy. I really do love the zoning aspect of local government, the conversations around land use. And so this has been a fun three and a half months or so where we've been putting forward policies related to density within urban growth areas. We've been having conversations about potentially expanding certain areas of the urban growth boundary lines and tree canopy discussions, what we're going to require of our developers to preserve when they develop. So, that's a really fun, robust conversation. I'm happy to dig in a little bit more with you all if you want to. But that's something we're right in the middle of, obviously with our eight-year comp plan update. We're trying to pass that in the next two months before council starts our budget deliberations. So you should be seeing some of the bigger, meatier policies related to comp plans being heard and discussed and deliberated on over the next few weeks if you're paying attention to our council meetings. So that'd be interesting for you all and I'd love to collaborate on how we can, I know that you're all, you know, you're in this dense area. You're in the urban growth areas. There's not a lot that the county is going to be doing that's going to be impacting you, but some, and some of the conversations around densification, around transit-oriented development right on the High Five Corridor, maybe there's ways that the county can be involved in and help assist in some of the, maybe the legislative priorities that the city is advocating for down in Olympia. I think that might be my last slide. If you could press next, I don't have my notes in front of me. Yes it is. So, what I've come to present was just at least start the relationship and present some of the information. Let you all know what we're dealing with and struggling with, both on the budget side, the land use side, some of the policies we're working on. But really what I wanted to do is make myself available for you all if you had any questions or if you had any ideas or thoughts. And then I did have a note for myself that every year, the county council, each county council member within their own district partners with some of their cities and has dollars set aside to work with cities with certain projects. And District 4, we have about $150,000 ready to spend this year, what we call city-county partnership dollars. And I'd love to hear if there are ideas of projects that you all are working on that the county could potentially leverage some of those dollars and help you kind of get over that finish line. So I also wanted to make a plug for that. If you've got projects to send them my way because we'll be throwing those and making them into the budget over the next month or two. Are there any questions?
Do we have any questions? Councilmember Sonmore?
Well, Councilmember Mead, I really appreciate you taking the time to do this. We don't get this very often over the years and so this is very meaningful to us. But since you asked, I'm just going to go for the big hitter right off and you know that's going to be that budget money. Can you tell me how you've helped other cities before and has Mount Lake Terrace ever gotten any of those funds?
Yeah, so I've been on council now for four years and I'm pretty sure with Mount Lake Terrace, it might have been a couple of years ago at this point, but there was, I think it was a sidewalk in Kyoko maybe, or Mirror Matsumoto Wright, you can refresh my memory, but I think there was either a sidewalk project or it might have been a sidewalk project, but I can't remember, but it would have been a few years ago. But an example that comes to mind for me is the city of Mill Creek. They did, it was a crosswalk that they were trying to partner with the school district, Jackson High School, to create a crosswalk in a different location for students, safety-wise. So we used some partner, some of these dollars for that. There was a park in Bothell that we, I think it was like $35,000 or $40,000 last year that we helped them. It was like a sort of a refurbishment of a park. I think Mill Creek has had a playground as well, like by their library, that we helped them out with a few years ago. So it's kind of, it's like kind of parks, a little bit of like Public Works kind of stuff that we can use it all, their REIT dollars.
I'm glad you said that because it gave me an idea of what you spent it on because I wasn't sure how much. And our Public Works Director and our Finance Director were having a meeting in the back of the room and they know what project that is, so.
Okay.
So we will take the action to follow up with you because we have lots of things going on that we could really use those funds for as well. And we can think of something good together. And so now that we know it could be parks, sidewalks, and we're having Safe Routes to School a conversation tonight too. So, we always can use those funds, those extra tools in the toolbox, as they've said over the years. And so it's nice that Snohomish County has something like that. But again, thank you very much for being here tonight. That was very useful information.
Oh, good, good. I'm glad. Yeah, I look forward to hearing from you and working with you on whatever project ideas that you have.
Anyone else? Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Councilmember Mead. Appreciate the presentation and the time. One of the questions I think, you know, that we often get from our community is just trying to better understand the multiple levels of government and what each of us do for them. And I appreciate that you gave kind of a high-level overview of the county as a whole. I think that's really helpful for people to understand. And maybe would appreciate if you could spend just a little bit of time for our residents who do live in an incorporated area, maybe talking to them about kind of what services they receive from the county and/or what support they would reach out to the county if they needed support on from you.
Yeah, yeah, I love that. Was that a specific question, a request for me to talk about that right now, you mean?
I mean, I would love, yeah, maybe if you have a few minutes to just give them a very high-level overview.
Yeah, so the county, there's a lot of services that the county offers that smaller cities don't have the capacity or the resources to offer. So our human services team, I don't have the slide now pulled up anymore, but the human services budget, once you include all of the grants, is absolutely gigantic. Hundreds of millions of dollars flow through our human services department to offer programs for housing help, rental assistance, things like obviously drug treatment and mental health, mental health help. There's, we connect with multiple, we contract with multiple providers on those aspects. So I mean, we have, and I should, if I was there in person, I would leave a bunch of my cards. But on the back of my car, my business cards, I have our public advocate. And that's who I usually, when I run into somebody, I'll give them my card and tell them that's the most important part of the card. It is a public advocate number. Her name is Griselda. She's our Snohomish County Public Advocate. You call that office and just say, here's the issue I'm having and she's a genius. She has all the resources to be able to direct you, whether it's navigating through the county system or if we don't offer a service, navigating, you live in a city that offers a service navigating you there or if it's a state service. I mean, people, I've directed people who are having issues with unemployment and the county and cities don't have any overview over unemployment, but she's been able to push them towards state resources. So what I always tell people is, yeah, it's very confusing, local governments, cities, the county overview, then the states. And you shouldn't have to, you shouldn't expect somebody who needs help to know any of that, the layering. It's just talk to somebody, talk to your city council member or talk to your county council member or talk to your state leader and they should be able to help find the resources. And so, that's why I like to give that on my business card because they can reach out to her and even if the county isn't offering that specific service, like in the case of property tax relief, senior property tax exemption relief, for instance, or unemployment and things like that that the county might not be able to assist with, we can direct you to some state or city agency that does. So I would say it doesn't even really matter the difference between what the county and the city and the state is offering. Reach out to your elected representative and they can direct you. And that's your job, that's my job, you know, to just advocate for people who need help, whether or not the service is in your jurisdiction or not.
Thank you. No, that sounds, I was going to say, I think we would love Griselda's contact information, so we will make sure we get that from you.
I'll send that to you. It's pretty incredible the stuff that she's been, I was driving on 128th. I got off the freeway, I was headed home and I saw somebody on the side of the street with a, you know, sign asking for help. And I was at a red light, so I had him come over and I gave him my card and said, you should call it. Because she had a kid with her and I said, you should call Griselda. She did. And she actually helped her find housing and some like initial rental assistance and helped her even with the state for, there was a service that helped homeless moms, basically. There was a service that she knew about, just as a public advocate. It wasn't even a county service that she was able to connect someone with. So, it's pretty incredible what services are out there that people don't know exist and it's kind of our job to help direct them. It's her job specifically to do that.
No, that's amazing. Yeah, I was going to say navigating resources is challenging and to your point, as a small community with limited resources, I think knowing what's available at the county level so that we can connect folks with the right people over there is really helpful. So thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thanks.
Anyone else? Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jeff, for the presentation. It helps us look at where that budget goes for the county. One thing I'd like for you to do is if you could keep more in contact with the city council, especially the city manager. I know, I haven't actually heard your name for a couple of years and I was actually wondering if you're still on the council. So I don't know if that's, I didn't know if that's me, but I just, we also have a lot of other House of Representatives. Lately, they're showing up, but they just aren't showing up here anymore. I don't hear their names and it'd be great to look at those projects. If you could contact the city manager, I don't know how often you'd like to do that or could, quarterly? Because he did say, they did have a project for some lighted crosswalk on 58th, but we haven't heard from this department, your department, for quite a while. When we used to, with past council member, see him every three to four months and sometimes, you know, with a check for $50,000 for the parks or something. So, I'd like you to kind of, if you could call the city manager more often and then he gives us emails and I could hear your name more often. I know you're out there and you do things, but I just, we haven't heard from you. So I'd like you to step it up if you could, please. Thank you.
Oh yeah, thanks for that. I think we should get a regular cadence going where we maybe have a monthly or like you said, quarterly, where we just, even if it's just a check-in with at least the city manager and maybe the mayor. But certainly if there's a big event or a big workshop or policy thing to discuss, then showing up and being in the same to discuss, then showing up and being in the same room and talking it through. Yeah, I think you're right.
Great, thank you very much.
Is there anyone else before I get to ask? Oh, Steve, Councilmember Woodard, you have your hand up. Thank you.
Mayor, I also want to say thank you for the presentation and the information specifically. I wanted to step back, and you had mentioned that you really like land use problems, is what I would call them, or potential, whatever, potential problem, whatever you want to call them. So that said, yeah, so that said, I don't know how much you know about Mount Lake Terrace, so instead I want to say, have you come across anything where you thought to yourself, you know what, a medium-sized city could really take advantage of something like this, but you didn't have the city that you could say, hey, you all should know about this? Of course, we're going through our land use issues right now, the comp plan, but just, you know, doesn't have to be something we'd implement today, but just in general, that perhaps somebody who really likes this stuff staring at us like, ooh, what about this? And we just haven't gotten there ourselves.
Yeah, yeah, no, nothing off the top of my head as far as opportunities for the city. I think you all have done a great job in Mount Lake Terrace specifically, compared to other South County cities, in really trying to do serious intentional planning for the growth and for light rail coming through, maybe because you're probably like the, one of the first cities in the county that have seen it. But I think the city of Mount Lake Terrace has actually done a really good job as far as planning for the growth. There's only so much you can really do with the space that you have, and some cities are more resistant to densification, to going up, and I don't think Mount Lake Terrace really has had that problem. I've seen other cities where the city councils have really serious fights, and it's a, and it's a really difficult conversation. But I think the city of Mount Lake Terrace has actually done a pretty good job over the last few years in really understanding the crisis that's coming and planning for it.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate, I appreciate that feedback. So, yeah, that said, open invitation, if you, in doing all this work, come up with something, because, you know, I will say, I see you a lot, obviously, because that's the job that I'm in, that gets me in spaces a lot more, but, you know, one of those is getting a chance to see the geography of this county, but also hear like, well, our geography doesn't match that, but the problem is exactly the same, right? So think through, and I realize you're in a lot other, more spaces more frequently, and people are coming to you with ideas, I imagine, so I would just say, we would be open to that feedback as well, and maybe just having more contact with you, that will come out naturally.
Yeah, I think so, too. Yeah, the conversation between the counties and the county and the cities is always an interesting one when I think about land use, because county, there's these pressures coming from both sides, like the housing community, housing advocates will say, you know, we've got to talk about expanding UGA lines, getting more space for more development, certainly densifying, but a lot of that, when you think about the purpose of the Growth Management Act, originally, it was to keep urban sprawl, resist urban sprawl, continue to preserve the beauty and the open spaces that makes our county our county, but what that does innately, it requires that cities want to take a bunch of density and grow, and that means grow up, because if we're not going to expand and get more space, you got to grow up. And so the county, it's this weird balance of, we can't tell cities what to do, we don't, we don't want to blow, we have a duty, I feel a duty, to really resist urban sprawl, but there's only so much unincorporated space within the UGA that we have to work with, and the county has less flexibility with what kind of building is done, because we have less resources for, say, road improvements, sidewalks, that kind of stuff. And so really, it's on cities to take growth, but we don't get to control the cities, and that's why I say, I applaud Mount Lake Terrace, because Mount Lake Terrace has seen this, the growth coming, and kind of been like, okay, we're going to plan for this, we're going to start densifying your downtown, all of that, whereas other cities aren't, not all other cities have responded that way. And so that's why I want to congratulate and thank Mount Lake Terrace for being one of the, one of the cities that's like, okay, you understand kind of our role and our responsibility here, and we got to plan for this growth and create housing.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
So there is some money in the kitty over at the county, and we have an aging playground system in Mount Lake Terrace, and I would like to know if some of that could, you know, we'd have to fill out something for a grant or whatever, we'll do whatever we need to do. So I'll have our city manager get a hold of our parks and rec, and also in Public Works, is there any projects that we have that are small that we need money for? Just bring it, bring it to us, and then we'll get that on that list, too. Will that work?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. I'm putting together a list, I put together a list in May, June, and then kind of prioritize them, meet with the councils, help and ask you to prioritize them, and then of the limited dollars, figure out where they can go. And so, yeah, please send me the whole list, everything that you've got, and if you prioritize it, even better. And I'd love to even come out and see some of the playgrounds and talk through some of the things that you want to get done with it. We can set up time for that before the budget.
We will be ready for you anytime. Councilmember Salmore?
You just mentioned, it's half, almost halfway through the year, is half of the budget already spent, or do you, when do you have to have the proposal by, or do you just do it as proposals come in, or if we give you our whole thing, can it be looked at for the next couple of years? But I know we're asking staff to do something, but I just wanted a little bit more parameters around that.
Yeah, so we don't allocate it, we pass the budget, and then we allocate the dollars in the following year. So this is, 2024, we'll pass our budget in like late October, and that'll include how I want to spend the 150, and then in 2025 is when we allocate it. So none of the dollars have been spent for the 2025 budget yet, and that's what we're, that's what I'm talking about, is just trying to get the 2025 dollars decided. But we do, there is the ability to kind of, to plan for longer-term projects, so a two- or three-year project, where some of the dollars go to the first year to, say, the architectural design, and then the next year, we have an agreement that once architectural design and you guys start the project, then Phase Two, the county with the second phase of dollars in 2026 would be able to help. So there can definitely, we definitely don't have to limit ourselves to one-year range projects. And the timeline, yeah, it's when we pass the budget is the deadline, so we have a few months still, four or five months.
All right, anyone else? Okay, well, thank you very much, Jared.
Thank you. Thanks a lot for the time, I appreciate it. I'll try to be here more often, and yeah, let's maybe set up that frequent cadence that we can get going, even if it's just with Mayor Matsumoto, right, and the city manager, and where we meet every quarter and have these conversations. But I'll look for that email with the projects prioritized as well.
We'll have it ready. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good rest of your meeting.
Thank you. So next is the executive session for property acquisition, RCWB 42.30.110, 1B, and that, we will be in the room for 15 minutes, and we will be back at 7:55. Thank you, we're back in session and no action taken. And so next on our agenda is a presentation of the fourth quarter 2023 financial report
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, I'm Janelle Lewis, I'm the finance director, and I'll be presenting the fourth quarter 2023 financial report. I think I go. Oh, wrong one. I was trying to do that one. Good evening again. This is the fourth quarter 23 financial report. Today, we usually review the city finances on a regular basis, posting the review on the city's website and highlighting the city council goals for the budget, including plan, finance, develop and maintain quality services, infrastructure and amenities, review city finances regularly to ensure fiscal responsibility, and develop and implement plans to ensure long-term funding and maintenance of public infrastructure. We'll be going over the overview of the funds, general fund, the major funds, general fund, recreation, streets, enterprise, REIT, street construction fund, and we'll conclude and have discussions and questions. And if you want, I can pull up the big report. So this is the overview of the major city funds. We have the enterprise funds, which consists of water, wastewater, stormwater, and then the capital funds is real estate excise tax fund, street construction fund. We also have another one, that's the capital improvement fund. The general fund pays for the city council, community and economic development, engineering, the city manager, resources, human resources, IT, police, parks and property management, finance, and municipal court, which is in-house, and we contract out. We do the indigent defense for municipal court, for residents. This is a summarized list of the majority of the general fund revenues. In your packet is a more detailed report that shows the budget and actual revenues received by the general fund from the years 2019 through the fourth quarter of '23. And this beautiful colored chart here shows, as of the end of the fourth quarter '23, general fund revenues were as follows. Property tax revenue for the fourth quarter '23 were 101% of the adopted budget. Sales tax collections for the quarter totaled 4.3 million, or 100% of the adopted budget. This is a decrease of $517,000 under 2022, or an 11% decrease. Utility taxes were at budget and 103% of the annual budget, totaling 4.1 million for the quarter with a 2% increase. Gambling tax revenues were slightly above the budget projections, totaling 1.2 million, or 109% of the adopted budget. Gambling tax revenues are back to pre-pandemic levels and exceed 2022 fourth quarter revenues by $108,000. Admission tax revenues are up to $76,000 compared to the '22 fourth quarter actuals of $60,000, with a 25% increase. Development fees totaled 1.6 million, or 66% of the annual budget. Development fee revenues are lower than projected in '23, and those fluctuate depending on who is developing in our neighborhood. State shared and intergovernmental revenues are 124% of the adopted budget and exceeded budget projections. Fines and forfeitures were above projections at 103% of the adopted budget, but not as low as '22, which was at 31% of the budget. Other fees and charges were below budget totaling $168,000, or 58% of the adopted This next one is our revenue and expenditure trends for the fourth quarter for the last five years. So overall, general fund operating revenues for the fourth quarter were at 100% of the '23 adopted budget, which is only 6% below the average for the past few years. In 2019, it was like 111%, '22, it was 108%. Total general fund operating expenditures for the fourth quarter were at 97% of the adopted budget, which is lower than this time last year. In '22, it was 104% of the budget. The recreation fund covers the revenues and expenditures of the city's recreation services, including aquatics, athletic fitness, youth, and general recreation programs. Overall, the recreation fund has covered 60%, 65% of its costs through the fourth quarter. The fund has a target of recovering 83% of its overall cost through user fees. The remaining 17% of the cost for recreation programs is funded by the general fund. That amount is higher than 17% now, in order to budget for the shortfalls. The budget to actual revenues and expenditures for the recreation fund. The recreation fund operating revenues for the quarter totaled 95% of the adopted '23 budget. Revenues from aquatics programs are at 62% of the budget. Athletic fitness program revenues are at 109% of the budget as of the end of the fourth quarter. Youth program revenues are at 123% of the budget. Total recreation operating expenditures at the end of the fourth quarter of '23 were at 98% of the adopted budget. The street operation fund maintains over 60 miles of city streets, 500 city-owned streetlights, 15 signalized intersections, 3,300 signs, 70 miles of sidewalk, numerous crosswalks and pavement markings, and vegetation for greater than 19 miles of planting strips and unimproved rights-of-way. And this is our little street sweeper. The street operating fund revenues were at 111% of the total '23 budget, but increased 6% from 2022. Street operations fund expenditures through the fourth quarter represent 71% of the total The enterprise utility funds, these are funds with revenues from user rates and fees. Like a business enterprise, these funds cover their own costs without help from outside funds. By and large, under Washington law, these revenues cannot be used to subsidize programs other than those related to the utility. The rates in each fund are made up of three components, a portion to cover maintenance and operations, a portion to cover debt on funds borrowed in the past to make repairs and upgrades, and finally, a portion towards reserves for replacing and upgrading the system in the future. The goal of the stormwater utility fund is to protect and monitor water equality, water quality, reduce flooding, spill response, meet city's regulatory requirements, inspect 122, 20 businesses, educate and educate the community about how they can help protect water quality. Manage store water through four watersheds, including 52 miles of pipes, seven miles of creeks, and 2,000 storm drains. You can, if you ever see anything like this, please clear it out. Most revenue in the stormwater utility fund is based on a flat rate and is therefore steady throughout the year. Stormwater operating revenues totaled 5.2 million, or 126% of the adopted '23 budget at the end of the fourth quarter. Stormwater operating expenses, including debt service, totaled 96% of the adopted '23 budget at the end of the fourth quarter. Stormwater operating revenues exceeded operating expenses by approximately 2.4 million for the fourth quarter. These funds will be used to make future debt service payments and fund capital projects. Here are the revenue and expenditure trends for the past five years. Revenues over- Here are the revenue and expenditure trends for the past five years, revenues over expenditures for the fourth quarter. Our revenue is going up, same with our expenditures. The sewer utility fund is also the funding source for capital improvements to the city's wastewater collection system and for the city's share of the cost of capital improvements to the wastewater treatment plant. We partner with the City of Edmonds and King County for treatment and support maintenance and capital improvements. And this is a picture of a list station. As of the end of the fourth quarter, total sewer operating revenues were at 106% of the adopted '23 budget. Sewer operating expenses, including debt service, totaled 97% of the adopted '23 budget at the end of the third, fourth quarter. Sewer operating revenues exceeded operating expenses by approximately 2.2 million. These funds will be used to make future debt service payments and fund capital projects. And this is the revenue and expenditure trends for the fourth quarter for the sewer fund for the past five years, '19 to '23. The water utility fund is to, the goal of this fund is to distribute potable water to M L T residents and businesses through 90 miles of distribution pipes, three water reservoirs, 900 hydrant access holes, 2,700 control valves, 6,000 service connections, and two and a half million gallon water tank. Wow, that's a big water tank. Water quality testing and capital improvements. And this is from the 1950s and 60s of what was installed. Operating revenues in the water utility fund are at 105% of the adopted budget as of the end of the fourth quarter. Operating expenses, including debt service, totaled 79% of the adopted '23 budget at the end of the fourth quarter. Water operating revenues are under operating expenses by two, or over, by 2.1 million for the fourth quarter. These funds will be used to pay for future debt service payments and capital improvements. And again, another snapshot of the revenue and expenditure trends for the fourth quarter. REIT revenues totaled 927,000 for the quarter. This represents 63% of the adopted budget. And see, there is a lower trend in 2020 due to the pandemic, and then a big spike, and then it goes lower throughout the years. And again, that's from developments and... The street construction fund covers capital construction projects to provide, preserve, improve street, pedestrian, bicycle, and traffic control facilities. The ongoing revenue sources for this fund are a portion of the city's allocation of the motor vehicle fuel tax, traffic impact fees, and interest that accrues on funds in the account. Additional funding is provided by state and federal grants and appropriations, loan proceeds, inter-agency financial participation, and REIT, real estate excess tax. Licensed tab fees that were initially received by the Transportation Benefit District are now reseeded directly into the street construction fund and used to pay for Main Street design and other construction costs. Because these funds are restricted by law to be used only for street construction and not street maintenance, they are kept in a fund that is separate from the street. So that's why we have a street operating fund and a street construction fund. The capital projects supported by the fund are those identified in the Transportation Capital Facilities Improvement Program, or TC FIP, and the Transportation Improvement Program, or TIP. The typical projects include street pavement overlays and seal coats, sidewalk and sidewalk ramp construction, bicycle route signing and striping, street reconstruction and traffic Currently, construction revenues and expenditures are consistent with budgeted programs in the TIP and TC FIP. The ending fund balance totals 9.65 million at the end of the fourth quarter, and 1 million is transportation impact fees, which are restricted in use. And that is the fourth quarter report and highlights the council's adherence to financial policies by providing you with quarterly reports. Next quarterly report will be for the first quarter '24, and that is scheduled for June 2024, next month. Any questions?
Any questions, Councilmember Solmore?
I just had a couple of questions about the charts. Some of them go from 2023 to 19, and some of them go from 2019 to 2023. Are they changed like that on purpose?
I don't know. I think it was just, that's just the way the report was written. You mean the, in the PowerPoint or in the?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
It was the recreation and the budget versus actual. So, because I was reading it backwards, because usually it goes 2019 to 2023, and this one went 23 to 19.
Oh, okay.
But I didn't know if the, if the budget for the rec one was actually the 19 numbers for the 2023, or the 2019 number was for the 20. It's just this, it goes 23 to 19, and I just didn't know if they got swapped. And then this one here is 23, so it would be this first green line here. So I was just trying to make the comparison because I saw that cable went way up, and then I realized that was actually this year and not 2019. So I wasn't sure how, if something had changed or something.
Maybe it's the chart behind it, the table, table behind the chart. I'll have to look at it.
Okay. Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Janelle. I appreciate the presentation and appreciate how quick you are working through all of, all of these financial, you know, getting things squared away so that you can come back and share with us. Appreciate that. I did have just one question, and it was around the enterprise funds. And I was just, out of curiosity, I think to your point, because they tend to be fairly, like, we, we know about what they are, just because I was curious about, that they were trending, revenue was trending above the projected revenue for fourth quarter, and was just curious if we had any insight. Is that just because usage was significantly more, or is that just reflective of maybe payments coming in later? Or do we have, I guess, any insight to kind of why, why revenue there was higher than we would have anticipated?
It was probably usage and maybe more people were getting accounts. I'll have to look into that to see if we had any more accounts than usual.
Okay. Yeah, I was gonna say, and I definitely don't want you to spend a bunch of time looking. I was just, was curious if we had any insight there and whether that's something that might play into what we see this year. Actually, as long as I'm talking, any early, I guess, ideas? So there was a couple, I think, in particular, that stood out in terms of revenue, sales tax, and, and development, you know, kind of significantly down in recent years. Do we feel like our budgeted projections this year so far are looking good, or do we know that? Is it too early to tell?
For '24?
For '24, yeah.
Um, yeah, I haven't, it's too early to tell right now. Yeah.
I'll wait till June. Thanks, Janelle.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? So the utility funds, the water and the sewer, had the income, the revenue, higher than, is that because we're saving those for, to use for capital maintenance?
It should, we probably had a lag in projects that weren't started, and that's, yeah. So what you see in the budget is usually, for those projects, we probably budgeted for them, but then we may have pushed them out further. But the finance director or the public works director might be able to answer that better.
Well, yeah, that would be great, because then it would help us understand where that $2 million that we didn't use, because this adds up way over $2 million on some of the funds that...
Without knowing specifically what you're referring to, if you're talking about us not having spent money, we are stalling things while we're waiting for comprehensive plans and only building what it is that we know we have to build until we know what it is that we're putting in the ground. I just want to make sure that we know exactly what size pipes we need to put in the ground, and I want to make sure that we have enough money to build the infrastructure we need for the town center.
Because it looks like we have a lot of money there, and it's good, but we're going to be using it.
Yes.
Definitely.
Yeah, it's, things are, things are so expensive, it, it can be deceptive. A lot of money can go very quick if you have to run transmission lines to support eight-to-12 story buildings that are running all through downtown, right? You know, I, I want to make sure that, and we, even then, we may be seeking bonding and other, other things to, to be able to support that kind of infrastructure, or if we knew, need a new water tank, you know, to have storage capacity if that should come to pass, which I don't know. That's the whole point of getting the comprehensive plans done, right?
And that was my other follow-up question. Even though people see that we have money in water, and we've been called out on this before, they think we're banking their money, which we actually are, but one project can be simply $3 million that we just had. And so that's, my follow-up question was, are we going to have enough? And so that's another thing when we have to go and look at our water, and, and water and sewer goes up again, and that's because that $2 million can be wiped out quickly. And so...
I'll give you a good example. The West Side Water Main Project, which we just completed phase one of, it replaced 3.1% of our system, and it cost us $5 million. So it, it is incredibly expensive, and that's without repaving over the top of it. We, we left patches over the top of it, which I'm a little unhappy about, to be honest with you. We, we should have really gone and paved over the top of that, which would have cost us more money, right, in order to do that? So, so I, does that answer the question right there? It kind of gives you the scope of how much it is to, to replace these utilities.
Yeah, because our, our citizens are still concerned about the high cost of utilities. So, and if they see that we have more coming in than we're spending, the question might be, what are you doing with it? So that's why I wanted to point that out.
Yeah, I mean, I, and understandably, I think the answer is, is that we're trying to spend it wisely.
Yes.
You know, I, I think, and, and that's the only answer that I can give you, is, is that our, we have, we have, thankfully, in your wisdom, you have allowed us to hire some very, very high-level engineers who have said, hold, let's just make sure we get the correct answer for what it is that we're doing right here, and that's what we're doing. We know there are specific projects that we have to do in order to, you know, have safe and healthy conditions for our residents, and we're doing those things. And otherwise, we're holding while we get better data.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else? My captain keeps looking to see if he's got his hand up. All right. I think that's it. Thank you very much. Okay, so next is our public works director, Jesse Hoffman, with a review of the Safe Routes to School contract.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm here to review and hopefully award at the June 6 meeting, the contract for the 216th Southwest and, whoops?
Forty-eighth.
And Forty-Eighth Avenue West Safe Routes to School Intersection Improvement Contract. We're going to review the lowest responsive and responsible bid and consider approving the construction contract with B and B Utilities and Excavating for 216th Southwest and Forty-Eighth, the intersection improvements. The agenda is the location of the project, the background, bid process, funding, request of council. We'll discuss and take questions, and then actually, decision and next steps will be at your next meeting. So the project is located at the intersection of 216th Southwest and Forty-Eighth Avenue. Here's a picture of it right here. This is actually a nice picture. That's the one nice corner. So this project started planning in 2019 when it was awarded a Wash dot Safe Routes to Sw, Safe Routes to School grant, say that three times, for $468,194. And in 2023, city council allocated 200,000, 200,000 ARPA dollars towards this project. Students from Mountain Lake Terrace Elementary and High Schools and the high school cross through this intersection on their way to and from school, as well as a lot of other pedestrian, bicycle, and vehicular traffic. There are currently sidewalks on only two of the corners, and the sidewalk network in that area does not connect them. This project installs eight curb ramps to meet current ADA standards, constructions of, it constructs curb belt on all four corners, reconstruct, reconstruction of the asphalt pavement, a rectangular rapid flashing beacon for the east-west crossing, crosswax, crosswalks on three of the four crossings, 340 feet of new sidewalk that fills existing gaps in the sidewalk network, a new stormwater conveyance system, which actually takes the water underneath the intersection, where right now you have a ditch system and it runs across the intersection the water does during a storm, and 90 feet of new 12-inch water main for future capacity, which runs eastbound through there. And so that's part of what will be a northeast rebuild of the water distribution system. So while that intersection is getting torn up, we're trying to put the water pipe underneath it so that the intersection doesn't get torn up again when we come through to rebuild the water system under there. Kind of forward planning, right?
On Forty-Eighth, going east on Forty?
On 216.
Oh, on 2, okay.
Right, so we're trying to catch it so we don't have to rip stuff up again at a later The engineer's estimate was 1,119,748. We requested bids, we advertised twice in the Daily Journal of Commerce, the Everett Herald, Quest CDN, and the city website. Four bids were received, and B and B Utilities and Excavating was the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. Here's a project map. I want to back up for a second here, because something I left out of the memo, and I didn't explain well, and I apologize for this, is, is that actually what we had budgeted for this job was 1,234,156. With the 15% contingency, we're over what we're asking council by 108,542 and 54 cents. And that's part of the ask here. And so I want to make that really clear to you, and I apologize for that. We came in a little bit over the engineer's estimate.
Go ahead.
On your project description, I remember you came in and you were going to build, like, a, lack of better, bulkhead where all the bamboo is on the corner house. Is, is that still part of, I'm just looking at the project description, because I know that was going to even increase the cost even more?
That's correct, and we are building and retaining.
Oh, you are? Okay.
Yeah, so we did all of those improvements. It, it's kind of hard to see from this map, if you can see on the monitor, but basically, we improved the whole intersection, connected all of the sidewalks, and one of the things we didn't describe in this PowerPoint is we lifted the intersection to make it ADA compliant, so when you cross the street, it's actually level, so people who have mobility issues can, can cross the street there. So it's as good as an intersection gets.
And it's just, sorry, Mayor knows this intersection well, and I've had people come to the house over this one. It's just going to be a flashing light. There's not going to be a stop, because for years, Forty-Eighth has been a speed... to be a stop, because for years Forty-Eighth has been a speed trap, you know, and so it's just, there's no thought of a four-way stop?
So, our really, really awesome new traffic engineer and our city engineer, and they are both amazing and very experienced engineers, we've had long discussions and very heated ones about this, there's something called traffic warrants, and these are, these are kind of issues that you come up with as a traffic engineer, that you, you put it in intersections to kind of accumulate, to decide when you put a stop sign somewhere. They don't feel at this point that it warrants having stop signs there, and it impedes traffic flow and non-pedestrian movement hours when there aren't, aren't people there, so I think their feeling is, is they wanted to start here with these improvements and see how it worked with RRFB, the flashing beacon, and with the crosswalks, and lifting the intersection and the ADA ramps, and that if that did not, at that point, create a better situation than it, that would probably be the next step.
The reason I bring that up too is because we've been talking a lot about preparing our city for light rail, and so when people are speeding to get to the light rail, and we've lived here long enough to know that, you know, I know the engineers are responsible for what they put forward, but they may want to keep a close eye on, because I know we had a stop sign, it took us six years to put in a stop sign, begging for that, and I know the neighbors want a stop sign there, but I'm just having, you know, if kids are crossing there and it's just flashing, I don't know how safe that is for the child crossing the street, and then also racing to the light rail, because that's one of the, they're going to use that street instead of 44th to come down, and they're going to speed, and we've, we've seen it, and there's been some pretty good accidents on that street, so I just, just a little disappointed that there's not a four-way stop, but we'll have to keep an eye on that flashing beacon, because as you know, people sometimes aren't getting better with driving, they're just getting a little faster, and sometimes we ignore certain things that we shouldn't, and I'm assuming just the flashing beacon is going to be flashing all the time, or where they'll be flashing on the sidewalk going across, so when somebody crosses the sidewalk, because this morning I saw somebody going to the high school, and they didn't use the crosswalk, they crossed into the middle of the street, and there's a little margin right down from the store, they stood in the middle of the street while the cars were passing to get to the other side to get to high school, and I'm just like horrified that this child's going to get hit by a car, and I'm just, just trying to eliminate any more of that, because the kids get embarrassed when they have to push the button and the lights flash, and if there's a stop sign, I think it empowers them a little bit more to have that ability to cross the street, so, just a two-sensor. And would it cost a lot more to put that in?
I don't think it would cost a lot more, I think, I think that having participated in now three discussions with Rich and John about this particular subject that went on for some time, I think their, their issue is really one of how traffic engineering works, and getting the data to support having the traffic, the stop signs there, and the flow of vehicular traffic through town, and timing on these things, and so I believe they feel that these improvements may, may do what's needed to be done here, and should it not happen, that, that they would then proceed with putting the stop signs there.
Just pointing out, they're brand-new engineers to the city of Mount Lake Terrace, right? And, and I know, I know about study flows and different things like that, but that's why council's on council, right? Because we've lived here forever, and we have children here, and have gone to school here, and we hear about this stuff, and I can tell you, I've had some conversations on this exact street, and I'm just trying to, and when they come and ask again, we can, you know, ask these questions, and, and can they take a survey of what's going to go on with our streets with light rail? Because Forty-Eighth is going to be one of those streets, and 212th is going to be one of those streets, and we're looking at a stop sign, and I used to take the bus, and I, I remember, you know, trying to get to the bus, and we'd all get to the same stop sign, or the flashing light at the same time, and, you know, there's a couple minutes mean catching the train or not, and so I just get worried that we may have to look at more traffic engineering, just to have our citizens feel safe with, you know, light rail coming in, because we don't, this is one thing that's new to all of us, is light rail being in our city, so I'm real worried about that piece of it.
And I think you should be, and I think that we actually have the right person in the job, John Merrick is top-notch, and I can't say enough good things about him, I trust him implicitly, and I think that he is looking at these things right now, he has traffic counters out around town, they're the little tubes that you run over and go, what did I just run over? That was, his traffic counters out there where he's testing speeds and seeing how many cars are going over stuff, they have a programmatic approach right now, John does with Rich, and they're going through town and looking at how traffic flows are moving. I think that if any group can look at this and come up with a game plan to do it, they can and are doing that, so I would, I would just give them a little time to look at this, and I think, I, I would give this a little time, let's, you know, I would say that, that, you know, let's, they have a good plan here, and Carolyn, did you want to?
I just wanted to add that the warrant that Jesse's talking about is actually a federal standard, so they're looking at the federal guidelines, and they're inputting data to make sure that they're compliant with those guidelines. There are a number of things they have to look at, and so that's the data that Jesse's referring to, that John's been gathering, and we have to make sure we're in compliance with those regulations.
And I understand the regulations, and I understand what the engineers are responsible for, and their liabilities and different things like that, but it's the future piece that I'm worried about, because if we don't do it right now, how long is it going, and we find out in six months that we should have a stop sign, how long does it take us to get stop signs? Because I've seen it take years and years and years to get a stop sign.
I'm, I'm pretty confident with the team that we have now that that won't be the case, I really feel like we have a full engineering department and awesome operations department, we can get Tim up here and his guys, and they'll slam a stop sign in for you, like, wicked splints.
On Forty-Eighth, are they looking at, for years, we haven't had speed humps, but a lot of cities are putting those in, because our fire chief was so opposed to them, but I'm seeing more of a need for those because of Forty-Eighth, people drive extremely fast on there, in fact, I had a friend die on there, and they, they had a heart, but they had a heart attack, and went into one of the streets, and then, growing up, we had a motorcyclist, a high school friend, die on one of our other streets, and so there's more of personal attachment than the engineers have, but it's, it's just wanting to break that cycle of having some speed reduction apparatus at least, maybe on Forty-Eighth, just to slow it down a little bit, because that's where the kids used to take their cars when they first get the car, and they drive as fast as they can down Forty-Eighth, and then they go down Candy Cane Hills, so they could get a speed out of it, so, you know, it's just, just going on experience.
Well, I, I would be happy to bring those issues to John and, and let him know, I know that I just signed a contract a couple weeks ago to have somebody come and, and put out the traffic survey equipment for him, he's working on that, and turn ratios around town right now, and that's an annual thing that gets done, I'm, I'm just so glad to see that somebody's on it and that he's doing it, he's taking in all that data, we also have an engineer one that is working on that with him, all of that stuff, so why don't I take these issues to him and let him know that it's a concern from council?
And the other issue is the, all the apartments going down in Linwood, there's going to be tons of apartments going down there, and they'll come up 212, they'll turn on Forty-Eighth, and they'll go down, or 212, and then they'll go down Forty-Eighth, so they beat not having to stop for the school buses for the high school and the stop signs, because there's no stop signs on Forty-Eighth where there are on Forty-fourth.
Yeah, makes sense.
So, Councilmember Murray, and then Councilmember Woodard had his hand up, and I'll have him go next, and then I have a few comments too. Do you have some too?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Jesse, and thank you, Councilmember Sonmore, appreciate the question about stop sign, and since our colleague, Councilmember Payne Donovan, isn't here, I know that has been a question of his many times about this intersection, every time we talk about this project, so I appreciate that we are talking about it, and I guess a question for you, appreciate, I'm excited that we have the new staff that we do, and I'm glad that you feel so confident in, in them, and I'm glad to hear that they are already kind of engaging in work to see what is happening currently, I guess in helping my own understanding around some of these things, recognize that there are, you know, kind of guidelines or regulations around kind of when we must do certain things to, you know, support, you know, traffic, but I guess I'm curious if there, do, are there things that we, can we do, like, I guess using the stop sign as an example, like, can we do things that aren't required, that aren't, you know, there's not enough traffic, you know, to require that we put a stop sign somewhere, but we would like to, because that feels like a priority from a safety perspective for us as a council? I guess I'm trying to understand, like, can we not put a stop sign there, or we just don't think it's necessary at this point? Maybe that's the question.
That's a great question, and I don't think I really know the answer to it, you know, I, I think I would prefer to go ask John, and, and I'll write an email to Carolyn, since she's the acting city manager right at this moment, and she can respond to you tomorrow.
That would be great, Jesse, thank you, and I guess to kind of build on just the why around asking, it's interesting, I was going to say, I haven't typically had navigation in my car, and it's interesting now that I have it built in, while I am traveling around the city, it giving me the quickest routes to go places, right? Which is not necessarily the route that I would traditionally go, so my daughter, I have to go pick her up at the high school a couple days a week, and we live, you know, very close to City Hall, and so typically I would take 236th, and I would go all the way down to Forty-Eighth, and I would go Forty-Eighth, but GPS tells me that I should turn on Forty-fourth, because it tells me that is the quicker route to go to the high school, and so, and I have actually found that with 52nd as well, which was interesting for me, because we had had a lot of concerns about accidents and pedestrian crossing at 52nd and 236th, and I hadn't realized that that's because that is the route it feeds everyone through who's going from Lake Forest Park up through Ballenger, if you are using navigation, it takes you, because it's an arterial on 35th, I think it is in Shoreline, and then it's a residential street on 52nd, you know, in Mount Lake Terrace, and so that is where it tells you to go, as opposed to taking 56 down to Lake Ballenger and going that way, and so I think there is a lot of, like, technology-driven routes that are changing kind of the way that traffic moves through our community in ways that perhaps wouldn't have been the natural ways that we, we transverse through our community, and I think that that's really, like, I think, thinking about how we make those less appealing choices and less quick choices to take routes that are perhaps not where we want people to go, would be something that I would just love for us to make sure that we are thinking about, and I think particularly in regards to this, like, I don't know that I want, that we want Forty-Eighth to be a place where there is, you know, quick traffic flow through, it has a speed limit of 25 versus 30 to 35 on Forty-Eighth, so in theory, it should take you longer to use that road, but that is not what, what the navigation says, and I think that's because most people are not going the speed limit down that road, so, I think there are good questions about safety, and yeah, I would love to just understand that a little bit better, because particularly because we are designing this as a safe route to school, we want it to be a safe route to school, so, yeah.
Well, I'm happy to get an answer about the stop sign and the GPS stuff, yeah, I think that's caused for some years now a lot of issues, and the only thing I really have to say about that is that I noticed that mine actually knows where I'm going on certain days of the week, which is really creepy, like, where I drop my daughter off to softball practice and everything, I'm like, why do you know that? You know, like, they really are tracking us, you know, the little AI in the thing, it's very bizarre.
Yeah, so anyway, but yeah, new, new things to think about, I think, in road design, and kind of, you know, creating, you know, perhaps ways to slow traffic through, you know, residential areas where perhaps that is not where we want the, the preferred main route to be, so, yeah, anyway, I appreciate this project, I'm excited about this project, I'm not excited about how much this project is costing, I will name that, I think that was some of my concern when we added the $200,000 from our ADA, or, not our ADA funds, but our, our ARPA funds, you know, I was already like, ooh, that's a significant investment, and I will also say, Jesse, that I appreciate that we do look for ways, every time we are doing projects, to be thoughtful about how do we ensure that we are spending our money most effectively to do the work that needs to be done in any given area, and I know we saw that, you know, when you were here talking about the project on 66th, we talked about that a little bit, as we kind of wait on some projects to make sure that we are doing them in the way that is going to best serve the community and best utilize our funds, I appreciate that we are doing that here, and I wish it was less expensive for us to make these meaningful infrastructure impacts or investments in our community, because this is important, and I think it is good work, and we need to do it, and it is, I mean, that money comes out of somewhere else, right? So that is money we don't have to spend elsewhere, so I will just name that, I appreciate it, and it is, it's hard to see those, but I know that is kind of the reality of where we are, so, thank you.
Councilmember Woodard, did you have your hands up earlier?
I did, thank you, Mayor. Firstly, I was going to point out, I'm actually an AI program, the irony doesn't, you know, escape me, that said, that joke should have gone harder than it went, nonetheless, I also want to apologize that, hey, here's your week, and I, I'm sorry I missed the luncheon, I too had a work call me, and I should pause and make sure you all can hear me, right?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Better now? Okay, I was like, that's not a good sign, all right, so again, apologies for missing the luncheon, I work demands, made it to where I had no choice, but that said, I also want to apologize, because you're going to hear again about this very same intersection, and the stop sign, I just want to go on record that, you know, I'd be curious to learn a little bit more about it as well, that said, I want to come at it differently, which is to say, I, you know, because we have a relatively new staff, which I don't want to extend to say that means they're new to Mount Lake Terrace, but not arguably unreasonable to think that's the case, some of this is about perception, I think, as well, in usage, as opposed to the numbers, which is just my way of saying, 58th and 230th, which, you know, my question here is, now that's a four-way stop sign, well, I've been here 20 years, and I can tell you that that was not always the case, it was exactly this conversation, and I'd be curious to know what was the decision that led to us finally getting that turned into a four-way stop sign, and I ask that because at the time that this was done, it was a single-family residence, and now, of course, it's a much bigger complex sitting on that very corner, so I don't know if that was, we got lucky, because I can tell you, as one who had to cross that street with his kids all the time, and have been in cars with people who weren't familiar with our area but are very smart people, they would pull out thinking, oh, it must be a four-way stop, and it was very well marked that it is not, right? So I wonder what made that final decision to turn that into the four-way stop, which has been an absolute blessing, because as much as it's benefiting me, I also crossed that same intersection we're talking about, because the high school's over there, and I'm an educator, I have lots of reasons to cross that street, and I absolutely, you know, every time, feel like you take your life in your hands to some capacity, so I can only imagine what that must feel like on foot, which I've never actually crossed on foot, I'm one of those cars that's hopefully not speeding, but is adding to the traffic there, that would definitely benefit from reeducating people that into a four-way stop sign, but again, I wondered, did the numbers support 58th and 230th? Because if it didn't, imagine how long that would have taken with that new beautiful complex sitting right there, where, again, a single-family residence used to be, so, a lot of words, but I like to paint a story, and again, I don't know anybody in front of you can answer that, except perhaps some of the folks on the council who have been here long enough to remember that conversation, but again, I'd be curious to know, did numbers make that decision, or was there something else that effectively said, let's do it now?
Go ahead, because I ran that stop sign in the very beginning.
We rebuilt 230th, that was a big ordeal, and it finished, I think we had the grand ribbon cutting with Pat McMahon in 2010.
When we did the, the road improvements for the sidewalks, that's when we put the four-way stop sign there, right?
So, it was one big project, Steve, so it wasn't, we just did it all together, I'm trying to remember the whole thing, but it, it'll come to me, but we were there for the big grand opening of it, we got it.
It took 40 years to get that sidewalk in.
Yeah, so Cliff Clavin, in fact, here, if you look in your photos, I bet you'll see my big head somewhere in there, because it's genuinely right in front of me, right? In the sense of, we used it all the time, I wasn't going to point out, it didn't have sidewalks either, right? You think you brought that up? But that said, think how fortunate we are now, to put that back in context, to have that four-way stop sign there, because again, it went from single-family resident on that, what would that be, the east, southeast corner, I guess, of that very corner, you know, and it's just, it's just amazing to me, and I think there's more coming, all things considered, potential there, but we put it in. things considered, potential there, but we put it in because we put stop signs in, or excuse me, put sidewalks in, that's, that's curious, so we're putting sidewalks in now, let's put the stop signs in now.
Go ahead.
And I guess, Steve, that's what we're, I guess, you kind of put the marker on what we're trying to say, because to me, that road is less busy than 48th, but we know in the future, this 58th will also be a bypass of 56, because people are gonna, so it's a good thing that we have that four-way stop there. And I, and we, when we had, what was it, on 220th, and where we're supposed to get the roundabout, that one was not a four-way stop either, and we had people running it, and it's worked out okay. I know it won't last long, and we should have already had our roundabout there, but that's, that's gonna be another big intersection, but those four-way stops have helped us. I know in my neighborhood, it's a lot less busy than 48th, but we had so many accidents there with people running and only having a two-way stop, and that's why we're asking these questions, because we've seen how issues arise waiting for stop signs to come in. And so I know the engineers have their different ways of doing things, but we also, you know, have to give the background and history of what's happened there, and trying to prevent those accidents that we've seen over the years. It's, it's been, 48th can get a lot of activity on, I'm just real nervous about that road, and, and you know how bad that street is right now, so that's another thing, and so, you know, we're just trying to, you know, do our due diligence as council people to give you our explanations of why, and Steve just kind of hit it home with, you know, we have it here, but, you know, why not there?
So I guess my question I would have for the council is, I'm asking for a little bit more money so that we can meet the 15% contingency, which I would recommend, so that if we run over on the job, we don't have to come back to council and delay the job. If you're okay with that, I would still like to pull this off of consent and see if John Merrick can come in next time, so that we can have a discussion with you, and then maybe make a decision after you have a discussion with John about this, so that council maybe feels more comfortable with the current design. This is a considerable investment by the city in this intersection, does that sound?
Well, I have a few comments that...
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor, please excuse me.
I'm, I'm one that actually walks that.
Oh, do you?
A lot. It's, it's, and so, yes, I've walked on all four sides of it. One side doesn't have sidewalks, the open ditches, are we gonna cover that open ditch?
Yes, that's all getting a stormwater system.
Good. And then I noticed there's traffic counters on there, on the road right now.
Traffic counters, yes, we put those out there.
Uh huh, and I thought, oh, okay, they're getting started.
Yeah.
I, I think that one of the reasons why, because I have almost gotten hit on that corner with my car a lot of times, and many times it was very, very close, and, and I really thought that my car was gonna get hit, whatever. But I think that the main reason is because when you're traveling east on 216th, there's all these bushes on both sides, and are those bushes gonna come out?
Well, if you're traveling east on 216th, we, I, I don't think we can remove the bushes on private property, unfortunately.
Well, because you're gonna be, it's gonna have to do, something's gonna have to happen, because you're not gonna be able to put a sidewalk in there without moving them.
So where the construction work will happen, can you see on the right-hand picture there?
Yes.
Where you'll see the, the work that's happening on the right-hand picture, you'll see, and slightly outside of that, where we, where we have to perform the work to get it done, we will be able to, to perform work in that area, and you won't have vegetation there anymore, because sidewalk will be there.
Right.
And as the sidewalks are getting rebuilt, but what is on private property is, is not ours to, to remove.
Well, then on, on the other side, where all the pampas grass and blackberries and everything are?
On the, that would be the northwest corner.
Right, uh huh.
That is actually, we have a temporary construction easement with that property owner, and we'll be building a retaining wall and a black chain link fence for them, and all that will be removed.
So that, that also makes it easier for, for people traveling that way to see, because I think that what's happening is they have to pull out so far in order to see the other traffic coming north and south on 48th, and by the, and sometimes they just don't stop, they're pulling out, and then they just don't stop. And, but if they could see it from before they reach the corner, then that somebody is coming, then maybe we'll have less, less accidents.
Yes.
Or whatever. I'm not opposed to the stop signs, but if we don't have to do that, I'm just wondering if that, the visual part of it is gonna help, because that's, because I never, I never have any problems from people coming the opposite way on 216th, it's always people coming that way on 216th, and then not, not being able to see because of vegetation on both sides, and then they're already halfway across the street before they notice that they need to stop.
Yeah. I wonder if this is a, potentially a code enforcement thing, if there are vegetation is overhanging to the point of visibility obstruction? Yeah?
Putting sidewalks in on that vegetation side, this is the one here you're talking about, but I think it would, might almost have to be cut back if you're putting in sidewalk.
Well, I walked that just the other day, and I looked at that, and I thought, whoa, I don't think that you're gonna be able to put a sidewalk in without going into that vegetation. But again, I don't know, I don't know where exactly the sidewalk is gonna go.
Oh, yeah, because you have a, so is the sidewalk gonna go right there, because there's a fire hydrant right there, so you have to move the fire hydrant?
We, we will, correct. Yeah, I believe so, and I don't want to misspeak, but I think if, looking at that picture, I believe, yeah, we'll have to lay that fire hydrant back, I think that was part of this plan, as the plan, as the scope crapped on us, as you can see by the numbers, as things, as this job got bigger and bigger on us.
Yeah, it's a, it's a really, we've been hearing about this area for years, and that's why we're doing our due diligence to talk to you about this, because I am trying to remember all the conversations I had with the neighbors there, I think when, so when back over here, I met with one of these neighbors, and she said she has so much trouble backing out of her driveway, because people speed this way, and so, I mean, they, I, I, we've had people come in, and that's why we're trying to remember everything that they've told us, so when we're doing it right, they know that their voices have been heard, and we're trying to do everything to accommodate them, and, and even going over budget on how to accommodate this, but it's really gonna be useful for the kids going to high school and, and on 48th, it's really gonna be a big improvement, and if you bring the engineers in or not, we're not trying to slow this down whatsoever, or that's not our intent at all, it's just asking those questions.
Well, it sounds like there's a lot of really good questions that you have, and John is a really pleasant person to talk to, and is the right person to talk to, and as much as I'd like to have all the answers, I think that I'm not the right person to get the answers for, I'm not trained in that field. So why don't I ask him if he can come in on June 6th and, and talk to you? If, if you feel confident in what you have here, we can move it through the consent agenda and maybe bring John in anyway, and, and just chat, chat through it. I mean, there's no reason why we can't change this job and, from the RRFBs and, and to the stop signs? You know, I, I don't think it would be that big of a change on the contract, do you think, Carolyn? No, I mean, that would be, if, if that's allowable, I think that's really a question for John, and, and I don't want to put myself in a position where I'm making a decision.
Yeah, we don't wanna, we don't want to delete this project, so we want to get it on the consent calendar, right?
Okay, all right, so let's, let's do that, but why don't I still bring John in?
So that we can understand.
So, yeah, about stop signs and kinda, and also maybe so that you guys can talk about, about your concerns about the incoming light rail and what's happening on 48th and kinda, and also maybe an understanding of how different types of traffic slowing methods are, happen, right? How, how these decisions are made from a traffic engineer's standpoint.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, on the consent calendar, as long as we have an understanding that if we were to decide to add a, add stop signs there, that that wouldn't necessitate different design, I guess that would be my only question for the, like, if current design and moving forward as is would prevent stop signs from being effectively used there, I guess I would want to take it off the consent calendar to have a conversation about it, but assuming that the answer is, like, no, we could incorporate that into the current design without, you know?
I think we've got a bid job here, and what it would entail would be a change order to a bid job, we would basically move, remove the RFB and, and put in stop signs, and there's part of your 15% contingency, so that's why we have that.
Maybe they're cheaper than the flashing beacon though, right?
Right, well, I mean...
We need the flashing beacon.
Okay, yeah, I guess I just, I guess, and what I meant was, like, I don't know if, like, the curb bolt, like, I don't know if that, I don't know, I don't have enough familiarity with this sort of thing.
That, that specifically is a traffic slowing technique. So you put those in there because people naturally slow down, but that's something also that John can talk to, to counsel about, is why, why they're doing what they're doing, right? And that's one of the techniques, I believe, that's used to kind of get people to, to pull their foot off the right pedal, right? Is to, is by putting those curb bulbs in.
So the flashing beacon is, is what you press the button, and then, does the sidewalk light up too, or just the...
I, I don't think so, I think this was specifically a flashing beacon.
It's all the time, that's the way I understood it, it would be just flashing all the time?
Okay, because in the wintertime, it's dark, it's pitch dark when kids are walking to school.
You bring up a really good point, because when I was walking down that too, or driving down it, the sun can be right in your eyes when you're, you know, and you don't...
Oh, yeah.
Just, just the way it lines up, the way we've created our streets, and how we should have created them off a little bit, so sometimes even on 212th, you can't even see cars coming at you, and so we're just giving you all our background on, more than you ever wanted to know on 216th, but this is really exciting for us, because we're coming to the fruition of actually, you know, getting what we need, and, you know, we've been hearing about this for years.
All right.
Reflective paint.
No, 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 we're, love it, but let's not realign the street, though, we're already at 1.3 million, let's...
The main thing, the main thing is stop signs is what we're, we're asking, is to...
So I, I think, once again, I just want to say, you know, being the Public Works Director, I, I want to give you everything you want, but I do want to get the expert in who, who has done this for his whole career, and we are so fortunate to get, and have that, have you have that discussion with him, I, I believe that that is, and moving forward, I, we are gonna have so many of these issues coming up, especially in the next few years, I think to have that open conversation with John, and, and I think would be a really positive thing for council, to, to have that information and be able to have those discussions with him, you know?
And can we get information, just help support that with our comp plan, to see what that area is zoned for too, and what could be possibly coming into that area? Because that would, you know, that's planning for the future too. I know there's already apartments there, and then we built townhomes down 216th, but along 48th, I don't know if we're looking, what we're looking at doing on that street.
There's only one big piece of property left on that.
Berg's?
Roger Berg's old property, and the others are all, unless you tear down a house.
Yeah, that's what I was...
I'll talk to our Community and Economic Development Director.
It's just a thought, it's just a thought, I'm not asking for a lot more, but it's just looking at support for those stop signs is all.
You got it. So in summary, I'll, I'll place this on the consent agenda for June 6th, and also ask John, and hopefully he'll, he'll have the time, I know he will, to come in and have a discussion, so we'll put an item on the agenda also, to have a conversation about traffic calming techniques and, and what's allowable under the code, right?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, I just want to make sure I'm clear, just so it's not an issue that we have to pull off the consent calendar. I'm fine with that, as long as we have the conversation ahead of time, that if we move forward with it on the consent calendar, and then get to a place where we do want, we decide collectively that we are gonna move forward, or want to move forward with stop signs here, that that doesn't create an issue that we had already approved the project. So I guess that's my only question, that I would just want to make sure we had clarity before it goes on the consent calendar at our next meeting, is that if we decide stop signs are something we want to move forward with there, that there's not an issue that we've already approved, the current...
If the city traffic engineer and the city council, if it's allowable, and the city traffic engineer says this is a legal thing to do, and, and the city council, and you guys agree, I will change the job to have your stop signs put in.
Cool, thank you.
Yeah, you bet, thank you, guys. Ready for the next one?
Yes. Thank you. So the next one is the extension, review, the contract extension for David Evans and Associates Construction Management Services.
Okay. I think we lost a council member, should we wait, or do you want to keep rolling? Keep going?
Yeah, we can, we can.
Okay, all right, so now I have an easy one for you.
Yeah, I was gonna say, so you think.
All right, so this is supplement three to the David Evans and Associates on-call survey agreement. So this is an on-call agreement that supplies really specialized survey, CAD services, and really what we've been using them for is construction management and inspection. So if we have a big capital job, we have them out there, they'll catalog how many trucks are on the job, whether, whether the, whether the product that's being installed in the ground, mostly for Public Works, is being installed properly with the right products, this all has to get done for grant purposes, for documentation purposes, in order to be submitted when we submit for payment back, and also for our records. We're very happy with David Evans and Associates, and so we are asking council to extend their contract to 2025, and to lift the cap on their contract from 100,000 to 300,000 dollars, so we can continue to write work orders for our capital projects to this firm. And that pretty much summarizes it. With your approval, we'll place this on the consent agenda for the June 6th meeting.
Does anyone have any questions, comments? This is straightforward. So it's just gonna go on the consent calendar next week, all right? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so next on our agenda is the presentation of the Community and Economic Development Update with Chrissy Osborne.
Yes, two places at one time.
Oh, yeah, gotta share the screen, where did it go?
Yeah, sure.
Oh, there we go.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, Mayor, and members of council. I'm going to present what we did with 27 projects in 2023 for development update, and then you'll see as we go through some of these projects, we're in the process of, I would just like to remind council now that we are doing some of these larger projects, you can see that these are sometimes several years in process, from going through pre-application conferences to land use and civil approval to construction, particularly for some of the larger development that we've been doing more recently as well. So we vary over time as far as when things actually get completed, and some of these... these you have seen before. So we'll go ahead and do that. So we have a little snapshot of permits and licenses that totals, numbers applied for, and then total valuation for the permits that were actually finalized. So in the total valuation, we don't put any permits in that we haven't actually finalized. So some of us were at Terrace Station Building Three earlier this week and they, you'll see, they have what's called a temporary certificate of occupancy, which means they're complete, um, their project is complete, but they have a few things left to do. And so for instance, their valuation wouldn't be in that, in that total, even though we've, we've issued, um, that temporary certificate. So for us, we had a definitely a little low because I think primarily of interest rates at the beginning of 2023 and we started to see things pick up towards the end of last year, definitely with pre-application conferences and that's continued. Um, we definitely had a higher number of land use applications and also were pretty much in line with building permit applications. So, um, those are tracking some of our previous years. We also, um, the CED department took over, um, the, the full business licensing process in our department last year in 2023. So you can see we processed over 2,000 business licenses as well last year. So we'll go over 27 highlighted projects for you to take a look at all throughout our wonderful city. And we have a development map right here, which kind of gives you an idea of where we're seeing, uh, development for a lot of these projects take place. So primarily you can see around town center, there's been quite a few things happen. Of course, Light Rail continues. And then in some of our other commercial and multifamily areas as well as off of 220th in our light industrial district, um, there's been quite a few things that have happened along the way last year. So, um, our first project is 212th Place. Council approved a planned unit development for Bryant Dadvar. It's on 212th. This is just about one and a quarter acre, eight, eight, um, single family residences, uh, interior access roadway. There is a pocket park, um, as you enter this subdivision. And then there's some critical tree and sloped areas that were protected as a part of this development as well. Um, they received final land use approval. At the writing of this, there was a pre-construction meeting and they broke ground about two weeks ago on this project. So this project is in process right now. Um, our next project is on 234th. This is a little fee simple townhome project, um, approximately a fifth of an acre. Um, it was fee simple divided, which means these are divided for single family purchase. Um, and this, um, project was completed as well, five units. Uh, Landsverc Quality Homes, um, finished the construction of Alter Townhomes right here. We have two separate buildings. There is alley access for parking in, for this, um, development, which is nice to have. We don't have, um, alley access in much, much of our development. Um, we have 12 homes. Again, this was subdivided for single family home ownership. And as part of this development, there's rooftop decks and open space, um, for the folks that live in these units as well. Um, this is one of the city's favorite projects. I know it is mine. It kind of makes you smile every time you see this playground, but the completion of the accessible playground in Trail at Lake Ballinger Park there, um, where we put in an eight-foot wide trail that's also accessible. And of course, the playground with the trail going from the parking near the boat launch to the Mickey Corso, um, clubhouse as well. And that project was completed. Our next property is called Cedar Park Townhomes. This is again, fee, fee simple, um, townhome development proposed AFCO and Sons. Um, and we're on 54th Street. This is where the private school was located previously on part of that property, um, just over two acres, 52 townhomes, um, with interior open space. There is, um, a cul-de-sac at the end of 55th intending to connect, um, through to the other properties for pedestrian access. So we're really trying to make sure that in town center or near town center, that we're not only thinking of vehicular traffic, but getting people to and from other developments. So we're just not kind of stopping people, um, accessing the community, particularly as we start to densify, um, the city, that we want to make sure that we have proper connections for both vehicles and for people to be able to walk through the city. This received land use approval and so how we review things is we do land use first, then the engineers will do a complete civil review and then we do building permit review. So this one is currently under, uh, civil review and I know that there are some stormwater issues that are getting worked out for this project, as I write here. Um, I never know if I'm pronouncing this gentleman's name right, but I think it's Caminos or, um, we say it two different ways in the, in the office. So I need to ask this person sometime, but it's a little two lot short flat. On lot one, there's an existing single family home. And then on lot two, we have a building permit application currently, um, in process. There's been some pre-tree protection on this property for that new lot two, um, so protecting some of the trees, um, on that back lot as well. Gustafson is, um, you see it on 56th Street, I'm sure, um, which is a fee simple, again, um, townhome subdivision, six units, um, as part of this property. The project was completed in '23, um, and I believe every unit has been sold now. Um, uh, Mr. Gustafson is now currently in the process of subdividing the adjacent lot to the south into a, a townhome development as well. Um, this is a great project here. As you all know, um, the city working with the Corps for Lake Ballinger Hall Creek Restoration. Um, and this process has been going on for quite some time with a lot of great environmental improvements, protecting wetland habitat and fisheries and restoring natural areas, getting invasives, um, out of this particular area while also providing, um, some public access that is, um, intentionally trying to protect some of these native, um, areas while also providing for some public access to this particular area into Lake Ballinger as well. And this project is expected to be completed later this summer, so. Um, our next project is called Terrace View Estates. It's a fee simple, uh, townhome development. This property is, um, behind the 711 on 212th Street. It's under construction right now. Um, the last I passed it, we have, uh, they've constructed a wood fence around the property and we're putting in foundations and such, um, currently on this. It was, um, in pretty bad shape on this property, um, previously. It really needed cleaned up and so, um, this development is underway and I, I would expect that we'll see completion by the end of this year or early next year. Um, 47 North, I, I think the new name sounds like a ski lodge, but it's a former PNT Townhomes, again on 56th Street. This is unique that we only have a couple live work, um, developments in town and this is one of them for those units along 56th Street. Um, they're intended for live work. Um, and, uh, 16 townhomes, again for single family purchase of this particular piece of property. There's some kind of cool design elements along the frontage when you walk along here. Um, I think they did, um, a pretty Summit Homes did a pretty nice development of this piece, piece of property as well. Um, our friends at Primera are ever busy. Um, and, um, as you guys know, that this project's been in process for several years, master planned improvements. And so in 2023, Orcus, the Orcus building there you see to the north was completed. Um, the Quanal building, um, is being subdivided to be sold separately from the rest of the development. It's that one building up on the hill that Primera hasn't really utilized. They've been leasing it out, um, to different folks. And then there were improvements in that retention pond, um, on the site for stormwater retention and native habitat was brought in there. So really trying to improve the site for environmental purposes and also for aesthetically, it, it works for both things. So that's what we completed, um, last year on Primera Project. Terrace Station Building Three, Trex. Um, we talked about this a little bit earlier. They held, held the ribbon cutting ceremony, um, earlier this week. So it's a up to seven-story mixed-use development, 210 units. We have some ground floor commercial areas. We have, um, uh, one of the end units is intentional in trying to locate a restaurant, which I'm hoping that will happen, um, in this development, more of a sit-down restaurant. We have, uh, rooftop amenities, um, in this development as well. And then this was part of this Terrace Station development. So you can see that we've also protected some wetland areas and habitat areas as well. And then there's a plaza between this building and building two of the development as well that's been constructed and completed for the project. And we, um, are anticipating, we've done a pre-application for, uh, a building four. Um, and they are getting ready to actually submit that, uh, project, which will front on 236, intended for more affordable housing in that development right there. So across from the future Candela Project in Kitty Corner, across from Light Rail. Um, Velorum Cottage Homes, this was our second cottage development in the city. Landsverc Quality Homes again. This was a little bit unique in that we had some, um, uh, units above garage spaces. So some, some smaller units in addition to some of these larger units, um, that are single family in this particular development. And this project was completed last year as well. Uh, Landsverc also has this development in process. It's called Willow Glen, 40 townhome units, um, spread over four residential lots. Um, some of these units are designed to have, um, front on, um, 55th Avenue, um, for hopefully better design aesthetics than just kind of being lined up in a row. We have six buildings there, internal access as, as well on, um, in these structures. This is under, um, construction. This picture was actually taken a couple of weeks ago, but there, um, it's probably changed since this picture happened there. They've been out there, um, working on this project pretty seriously and that will be completed this year. Um, our Candela Project, which is, um, the site that you're driving by now, the temporary parking lot adjacent to the Light Rail station that's getting demoed as we speak. Um, the Candela Project is, has received land use approval. It's near, um, civil permit completion. We've reviewed it a couple of times. I think we're in the third round of civil review, so it's pretty close. And the building permits are ready to issue once, uh, civil, um, review is completed. So this is near getting, um, issued. Of course, the demolition of the parking lot and some temporary restoration of that site needs to be completed. Um, but they're making pretty fast progress on that site right now, um, to get ready for the start of, um, um, working on this site for this project. So this project will start this year as well. Our Sound Transit Project, so, um, we're, we have an open date of August 30th of this year. Um, we're working very diligently, I believe most all of our staff on this project every single day, um, trying to get it across the finish line and, and get everything completed as far as all the conditions of approval, all the permitting, um, in making sure that we can get the station open, um, at the end of summer. So, um, as you know, this year we opened the bus loop in March and so that's been open for the last few months and then trying to complete the rest of the improvements for this project. Ace's Poker, um, and this was a renovation of this, um, um, use here in Nelson Business Park off of 220th. Um, it was pretty, it was looking pretty bleak there for a number of years and went in and restored it, um, on the interior and exterior, um, and then, and improved that site quite a bit. It's been cleaned up, um, as well. So they did a lot of code compliance. I haven't been in, into the interiors, but, um, I know that they did a lot of improvements for, in the interior as well that needed to be brought up to code. Mount Lake Village is former's Rogers Market site. Um, they're getting ready to resubmit, um, so their land use applications. This has been coordinated with the Main Street Project on 56th. So there's been a lot of moving parts for this project. So normally we would do a lot of the land use first. In this case, we've done land use and civil pretty much hand in hand, um, just because of the, the Main Street Phase Two, um, um, construction and anticipating that it's going to be 323 residential units with some ground floor commercial space on the southeast and southwest corners of, um, the property that fronts on 232nd. We're getting a car wash, um, as well. Chain Lake, um, Express Wash, we're trying to, um, encourage them to change the name because they're, they have a car wash at Chain Lake. Um, but, uh, we've been reviewing this. It's still under land use approval. They had some transparency standards, so the window glazing and stuff, the requirements, the design requirements that they had to go back and in the process of tweaking those and making sure we had adequate parking and interior ingress and egress, um, we're pretty close to giving this project land use approval as well. And this is on 44th. close to giving this project land use approval as well, and this is on 44th. This is a street vacation that council approved for what is Sierra Construction. This is the fourth build, what will be the fourth building of Terrace Station, if you will. And so this is setting the stage of one of the things they needed to do in order to move forward with that development on this particular piece of property. Forest Crest Athletic Club, this is in process right now for three lots. We did a pre-up with these guys this week, actually yesterday. This will probably be different next time you see it. It will be a five-lot short plat because they're proposing to reconfigure this and reconfigure their tennis courts and put pickleball courts in, et cetera, as part of a conditional use permit that we did a code change for previously. So they're coming in with their conditional use permit for that, and then as part of that, they'll have to modify the short plat. And what they're showing us is it will change from three to five lots as they reconfigure these existing parcels as well. Fifty-Second Landing is also on 52nd Avenue. This is across from the other development that we discussed behind the 711 earlier. This is a proposed four-story building. We're in a community business district, so there will be commercial on the bottom floor will be required, and then there'll be three additional floors with 33 units as part of this development. And I believe we're talking about two, it's between one and two separate structures, so but that is currently under review as well. Tiburon Town Homes is another fee simple unit lot subdivision, again, a town home development. There was a single-family residence on this particular piece of property, and it's proposed to be for town homes on this piece of property, and they're also under land use review. Promenade is the development some folks have probably heard about. It's the property that was owned by the mosque, that was, a member of the mosque, I should say, that was sold, and the folks that it was sold to are under land use review right now, proposing a five-story, 91-unit residential development here with underground parking as well. And that's just kind of getting started as far as review goes. That's not far into the process. Tiny Treasures Childcare on 44th, so this is near the Safeway, and this is a proposed childcare center on an existing vacant site. We're working with them right now on land use review to make sure we have adequate ingress and egress and parking. As you guys know, for any childcare center, we have these peak hours of drop-off and pickup and trying to get people in and out of the site safely. And so we've been working with them as well as engineering on getting this project ready for approval as well. Terrace Court Town Homes is a recently submitted town home project. We are on 230th, so the property is two lots that are actually shaped, both of them along 230th side-by-side. Eleven fee simple units on these two properties that are two separate buildings separated by a drive aisle, and then access is on the rear of these proposed structures. And this is currently going through land use approval. Vets Park, last year, we reviewed the Trails phase of this particular project, so that was approved land use-wise, and it's getting its final civil and building permits. And then we're currently reviewing the improvements on the front of the site now for the restroom improvements and rearranging the play equipment and the frontage of the property and those things. So you folks will be seeing some of those in your next update as well as we continue to work on Vets Park. And that is all I have to share with you tonight. If you have any questions on any of those, I just, I did a quick calc today for how many building permits we've processed in engineering, fire, and land use permits were already exceeding what we, the number of permits we had last year. So I'm thinking we'll probably be busier than ever, or at least last year, from development proposals as well and just with the market being what it is. So we're anticipating that we'll stay relatively busy in the planning department. So with that.
Do we have any questions or comments? Go ahead, Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Kristi. I appreciate the update. It's always nice. I know we hear about these things in kind of bits and pieces, but it's nice to kind of have the collective update and be able to kind of wrap our heads around holistically all of the change that's going on. So appreciate the update and all of the work involved in making all of these things happen. I did have a chance to join the ribbon-cutting this week, and I just was very impressed with a lot of the details in the building and just the thoughtfulness of the approach. And so, you know, excited to have more of those sorts of thoughtful developments around the community. They have like this theme of like a station, and it's beautiful. I did have one question for you, and it was around the Mount Lake Village plan. Were we anticipating initially a lot more ground for, until it's late, ground-floor retail there? It was like, I guess I had like 8,000 or something in like my mind, but maybe I'm thinking of a different project.
Yeah, so on that project, we, when we did Town Center, we had some areas that required ground-floor commercial, and then we had some areas where just the corners were required to have so much ground, ground-floor commercial, just on the corners, a 30 by 30 area. And so this is one of those properties. So they're only required to put ground floor on those two southern corners of this property. We definitely encouraged more commercial, and I know a lot of folks were hoping for grocery store on that ground floor, but per code, we could only require what was adopted in some of those areas that were just the corners. So they're complying with that minimum requirement.
Thank you. And that's something we're looking at, I think, as we talk about comprehensive plan updates as far as kind of future visioning for the.
Yeah, and just, I know, making sure that we're, I mean, right now, we allow grocery stores in Town Center, but I know there's conversations of, you know, maybe some of the things that we could do to encourage some of those opportunities in the city.
Great, thanks, Kristi.
Yeah.
The, go back to some of these. The one on 216th and 52nd, 212th and 52nd, across from the town homes, is that the Dave Richardson property?
I, you have way more knowledge than I do.
Or is it the one that's the old Chinese restaurant?
No, it's the other direction, so it's adjacent to the Little Strip Mall.
Okay.
Yeah, on the corner there.
That's Mr. Richardson's property.
Okay, yeah, and that's all fenced in right now, and yeah, it's that one.
And then the two-corner ones from on 230th, is that Peter Tang's property?
Again, Mayor, you're like showing me up with your knowledge. That sounds familiar, that name.
There's a two in a row on that.
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay.
Uh huh.
So he's going to put town homes on there.
Yep.
And then, yeah, oh, the car wash. I found out about the car wash quite a few, well, probably a year or two ago, just randomly talking to another broker, real estate broker, and I thought, a car wash in that corner? We really are going to put a car wash in that corner?
Well, it's allowed. Like I said, we've had a lot of back and forth with making sure we have adequate ingress and egress right, you know, on that corner because it's pretty tight right there, and then making sure we have employee parking, and then with the car wash comes vacuums, and they have a little retail space that's just dedicated to car stuff, you know, air fresheners and that type of thing that's pretty limited. But yeah, they're, you know, as long as they're meeting all the requirements in our code, then it's definitely something that they could do. And I know that access with our engineering department has been limited off of that corner, right? So we're making sure that we have safe ingress and egress and site distance on that particular corner. But yeah, it looks like it will most likely get approved.
For how long will a car wash stay there? 50 years?
I cannot answer that question.
That corner would have had so much possibilities for so much other wonderful things.
Yeah.
I'm sick. Okay, well, you can all hear me say that. I have my opinions.
Is the daycare, because I'm trying to think of any single lots on 44th, the little single lot that they wanted to.
It's our up-house.
The what?
The lady who waved?
Yes, that's what I was just gonna, yeah, where they were going to build the storage units, that one.
Yep, it's that one.
Mayor, Councilmember Woodard. Okay, Councilmember Woodard.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager. Thank you, Mayor. You can't hear me?
It's quiet.
Too quiet? Well, we can hear you, but you sound far away.
Yeah, I don't know. It's been that, you guys thought that was Jared, and he was perfectly fine with me. So how about I just talk louder?
Yes.
Communication strategy. Any better?
Yes, uh huh.
Perfect. So mine's quick, which is just to say thank you for the report, and if this isn't already the plan, can we have this specific report singled out and available like as a web link or something off the page? I think people are really interested in this type of information, and we've done such a wonderful job of like creating the tool where you can look up stuff on your own, but to have it laid out like this was truly impressive and a little overwhelming, but also very much talk of the town, if you will. So if that wasn't already the plan, that would be my recommendation, but the real takeaway here is great report. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it, and we will do that to make sure.
So when people talk about things in our social media, we can have somebody in there with a link to this report because there's so many misinformation going out there. And if someone can just forward them this link, then they can find out what really is happening.
Yeah, yeah, and when we get fully up to speed with our new permitting software, then this will automatically, as we go, be updated for the public, and that's part of what we've been trying to do is making sure that this information is always available for anything that's going on. When somebody comes to the city's website, they can click on and then see what's being proposed. I think that would be really helpful. And then if they have more questions, then they can get ahold of city staff, and we can answer those questions for them. So just trying to improve that versus updating, you know, every six months or whatever, that's kind of, or keeping time with what's going on for people.
And I'm noticing there's a lot of new construction homes after tearing down the old one, the new construction is coming up, and it's just random in random places, and it'd be kind of nice to have a, you know, you link on that map, you just link to see what's going on.
Yeah, it'll be in a map form, and then you could click on the link and then get the information, you know, what's going on down the street, and then you can click on it and see what's going on.
Because one house that got remodeled off of 58th is a adult care home. Huge, huge, and the neighbors are really not so happy about that one.
We're going to be seeing more adult family homes, I'm sure, not only in our city, but in most communities, and the state is kind of relaxing the number of units that you can have as a place for facilities for elder care. So there's state guidelines in place for some of these more intense uses that can be done in a residential zone, and I think we're going to see more of these type of things. I know in some areas in different communities, like a whole street will be adult family homes, like a whole street. So yeah, we haven't reached that yet, but we definitely add adult family homes a certain amount every year in the city.
Okay, anyone else? All right, we're heading toward our pumpkin when we turn into a pumpkin day.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're done with that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next is public comments. Do we have any public comments?
No one signed up in person, there's no written comments, and no one preregistered for online.
All right, thank you. So has everyone looked at our next meeting agenda, which is in two weeks, not next week? Okay, and then council comments. Does anyone have any council comments? Okay, I don't see anyone's hands going up. We really want to not turn into a pumpkin. So next is adjournment. We're adjourned.
End to the end. Congratulations.